All right, let's call the City of Santee regular meeting to order. It's Wednesday, August 23rd, 2023 at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all council members are present and accounted for. And welcome, everybody, that's out here tonight. See, we can get out of here a decent hour. We don't have any closed session or anything tonight, so that ought to help a little bit. So what we're going to do is have the invocation led tonight by just a second, and I'm gonna read his biography, even if he thinks I put too much into it, by Pastor Andreas Walker Toda. And let's see, who's gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance tonight? Stephanie, do you want to come up and do that tonight?
Yeah, that'd be you.
That, perfect color. That's perfect. So, um, so tonight, you know, Andreas has joined, uh, he joined the Carlton Hills Lutheran Church congregation as their new lead pastor in January 2020. He leads worship and provides spiritual care and support to community members. Andreas received his bachelor's degree from New York's Columbia University in Urban Studies and attended the Trinity Lutheran Seminary in Columbus, Ohio. Andreas has proudly served Lutheran congregations and communities since his ordination in 1997, I'm sorry, 96, including Prince of Peace in Queens, New York, St. Timothy in Miami Gardens, Florida, Our Savior in Freeport, Grand Bahama, and Living Faith in Pembroke, Pines, Florida. Ooh, I had a hard time saying that one. He served as a chaplain to immigration detention through church world service under contract with the Immigration and Customs Enforcement, and as a spiritual counselor for various hospice organizations in Florida and California. Thank you very much for doing that. Andreas always takes an active role in community work where he serves. He serves on the Board of Directors of Santee Food Bank. The food bank is on the church campus even. Andreas is actively engaged in establishing solutions for those who are unhoused in our community. Andreas and his wife, Tamara Walker, have made pastoring a family business as Tamara serves on the pastoral team at First United Methodist Church in Mission Valley. Not sure, but I think that's where I got married. And thank you for being here again this evening. We ask you to pray for the United States of America, the state of California, Santee, and of course, this city council. So please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
As a point of privilege, I try to get that bio shorter every time I come here, but I've not been successful. Good to be here. Let us pray. Gracious God, we are grateful for this opportunity to gather as we carry out the work and business agenda of this council, and more especially as we consider the well-being of the residents and people of the City of Santee. We are grateful for this day that the sunshine warms us, especially since the last days threatened our city and state with the rarest of occurrences, a hurricane that became a tropical storm on the Eastern Pacific. With a threat of wind and rain all around us, we are grateful that in our city, damage was minimal, loss of life and livelihood was averted, and we are safe. We pray for those in other parts of the county and state, and even in Baja, California, who experienced greater impact from the storm and who seek to rebuild what was lost. Keep us mindful that the blessings and fulfillment of dreams that we experience in our own lives are signals that we are to care for those whose fortunes in life are fewer. As our Santee Food Bank continues to serve residents of our city and beyond, and as the numbers of people and families needing assistance continues to grow month by month, let us renew our efforts to be good and caring neighbors to those in need. Help us to be creative in finding solutions to issues of hunger and housing that reach beyond mere assistance, solutions which lead to new opportunities for individuals and families to create their own best futures. Isaiah 58 reminds us that we honor God, not by following our own ways, not by finding our own pleasure, not by speaking our own words, but by doing God's work. For then you shall delight yourself in the Lord, you shall raise up the foundations of many generations, and you shall be called the repairer of the breach, the restorer of streets to live in. Be with our mayor and city council and all who come before them today. Guide those conversations and the deliberations that take place tonight. May we always remember the purpose for which we all are here, to work together for true peace and justice among all people. Remind us of the words of Frederick Bickner, who shared, "The place God calls us to is the place where our deep gladness and the world's deep hunger meet." May we be joined in such a place always. In your holy name we pray. Amen. Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Speedy recovery, too. All right, that takes us to the calendar. Are there any items to be added, deleted, or reordered on the consent calendar? Ron?
No.
Vice Mayor?
I'd like to have some discussion on item six.
Number six. Destin?
No, sir.
Councilman McNellis?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
City manager?
No, sir.
City attorney?
No, ma'am.
Any speaker slips?
Yes, sir. I have a speaker on item one, two, four, and two speakers on item number six.
All right, then. Do I have a, um, motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, thank you. And that's on the remaining items. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Let's go to item number one first.
Truth?
Truth, before you start, I'm gonna read the, uh, what the title is on that. I seem to not do that, but we should probably have it on the record, what you're speaking to. Okay? So item number one is approval of reading by title only and waiver of reading in full ordinance and resolutions on the agenda. Go ahead.
Great, you know, that's actually exactly why sometimes I say it in my speech, so that everybody knows and there's no confusion. Okay, uh, let's see. You know, I'm glad it's more than 60 seconds, because I got more fire in one minute than I do in three. So, for passing ordinances and resolutions by title alone, see? I realize the best example of something that sounded good by title alone, every single decision at the County Board of Supervisors, but a specific example, would be July 18th, item 14, entitled, "Authorized Competitive Solicitation, Single-Source Contracts, Amendments to Extend Existing Contracts, and Cooperative Revenue Agreements for Behavioral Health Services." It's a very long mouthful of a title, but it sounds like normal business, right? John, you in particular, you should know all about what it really entailed. You can ask Bergman soon. The county's behavioral health contracts entail a community harm reintroduction team. That means needles and pipes will be provided to children. That's right, children, just like they are to adults. There's also program for prevention of psychosis, including school-based going after the children with electroconvulsive therapy services. That's electric shock, like we're still in the eugenics era. There will also be contracts with the Polanski Center, which has been accused of inadequate staffing, drugs and alcohol on campus, and children going AWOL with three dozen wrongful death, negligence and civil rights complaints brought against county's child welfare office. And I'll end it on that, because it's actually a long mouthful, too. But that's, that's a great example of, you know, because we could say electric shock and needles and pipes for children doesn't sound good in the title, right? But it was hidden in the details of the contents, and if you never read the item, you'd never know that's what it entailed. So that's why it's important to hear at least some of the contents of ordinances and resolutions. And also now everyone knows just a little bit of the evil I fight just about every other week. As for my summary idea of writing it into legal language for you guys myself, I realize I do not actually have any legal language writing skills, imagine that. But I am a jack-of-all-artists trades, and I will still accept a 5% salary increase from willing taxpayers. In fact, I had a discussion last week about bringing up a tip jar while speaking, so I could start getting funding for all of this fun research. You know, I could even get a PayPal QR code on the back of my jacket, and you'd be an expert homeless person. You never know. But, yeah, that's why, just in seriousness, that's why I think it's important. However, I know it is legal. And you did read the title this time, that's a good improvement, I like that. Thank you, includes my comments.
Motion to approve item number one?
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
That takes us to item number two, which is approval of payment of demands as presented.
Truth?
Payment of demands, indeed. Eben Moser and Skaggs LLP is getting another over $36,000 for the land monopoly scam known as the multiple species conservation plan, while ICF Jones and Stoke Inc. got almost $12,000 for the scam. David Church and Associates got $5,000 for federal advocacy services. And I would ask, does that count as buying votes for the City of Santee? All right, from, oh, sorry, from April to June, the State's Department of Conservation got over $2,000 in strong motion instrumentation program fees for the state to operate seismic monitoring electric boxes called accelerographs and to use that data to put up on hazard maps. There you go, there's something new I learned. Interwest Consulting, who I was not particularly impressed with in their Q and A at a few meetings back, is now getting over $10,000 for their services. Mills on Wheels, whose name I haven't seen in a while, and really this is just an excuse to mention them again, is getting over $1,500 in CDBG bucks. A Sandag member agency assessment cost over $26,000. And I'd say unless it's highway expansion or an assessment of the cost of a limiting Sandag, I'm against it. But what everybody wants to know is, how much money went to Chuck E. Cheese? I'm just kidding, would've gone there if they had been open for my birthday. Thank you, that's it.
Motion to approve item number two?
Second.
Motion is second, please vote. Happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
That takes us to item number three, I'm sorry, item number four, which is adoption of a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for a housing acceleration program cycle two grant funds from the San Diego Association of Governments and authorizing city manager to accept grant funding and execute grant documents on behalf of the city.
Truth?
All right, joke's over now. I'm definitely against a $650,000 housing acceleration program grant from Sandag. The land use element update is going to lead to the removal of a zoning barrier to make way for vertical mixed-use development. A nice way of saying ugly, sustainable slate gray stack and packs with businesses at the bottom level on Mission Gorge Road and near the Trolley Square. That's all the federal and state government once accelerated as bad things, and it's really just a part of what Asana Krata refers to as behavior change. Build the $800,000 box units, and the younger generations are expected to accept the new way, the new world, where they have no yard, no privacy from neighbors, with no expectation of privacy, while outside their boxes. No car, no children, just like the bleak future Sandag forecasted recently, where they said people will have less and work more. It's actually very similar to the World Economic Forum slogan of, "You'll own nothing." And of course, I never repeat the last part, because it's a lie. The city will commit either $30,000 or about 300 hours of staff time toward management of the project, committing staff, playing the game by their rules to get the Sandag monopoly money, which I always carry with me, because it seems to always come in handy. The Santee Town Center smart growth area, including multimodal corridors and public transit, is a joke, because I say, "Show me the buses, and then show me the people in the buses." And if it's true in the brief project summary that the city has a commitment to reduce vehicle miles traveled, then feel free to openly abandon the overdue upgrades to the 52. And in the responses to evaluation criteria, there's a claim, "This will increase housing affordability." If that's true, where is the guarantee in this contract form? Everybody, everywhere knows, these little boxes are never affordable. They just take up land from real home developments. But Stack and Packs make both cities and big developers a big money, so who can resist, right? This is the most telling part, quote, "The project will transform the city from a suburban bedroom community to one that supports higher-density mixed-use development," end quote. End quote. "If only half these sites would be suitable for mixed-use development, this would result in an additional 4,180 housing units throughout the city," end quote. Where will all the people, their children, and their cars fit? That's the question. But it's nice to know the City of Santee is looking to become an anti-housing jurisdiction, just like the county and the city of San Diego, with policies including permitting duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhomes in single-family zones with up to four units on one lot, allowing more larger ADUs than state law requires, and standards to promote more density and reduced parking requirements. It's either fraud, or it's transforming Santee into San Diego. And the word kickoff is misspelled and app-
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
And that takes us to item number six, adoption of a resolution approving the final map for a residential subdivision consisting of 38 attached condominiums and 15 single-family dwellings, and authorizing city manager to execute the associated subdivision improvement agreement. Location, Prospect Avenue at Maricall Lane. Applicant is KB Home Coastal. Uh, do you want to have a, uh,
Speakers first.
You, speakers first? Well, do you want to have any kind of staff presentation? You, speakers first? Okay. Speakers?
Okay, truth?
Well, I was gonna say, I pulled this just to say something positive, but I'm just gonna say something positive just because I can. Hooray, for 15 single-family homes on Prospect Avenue, that's the complete opposite of the last item, and I'm glad. And I would ask, why can't this exist everywhere, you know? But it's a rhetorical question, of course, because I know the answer. I go to the Sandag meetings. It's odd, and I go to the county, and I go to the city, and I go to other cities, and it's always the same thing, because they don't get funding for the good stuff anymore, because this was approved in 2019. So that's why I can't. But like I said, I was gonna say something positive. So I'm happy, every time I see single-family homes, I have to say something good. Thank you.
Next speaker, Linda Markel.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and Staff. On this project, you know, I'm really concerned about this water coming down off of Prospect, down onto Markel. We dodged a big bullet this time. The water came down so much from the KB project that it flooded in front of my yard and built like a little mini river. I knew that that was gonna happen when KB took out that drain on that property, the school, the old church property. There was a drain that prevented that, that the city had had put in, had the other people that were going to develop put in. Well, when that was removed, I knew that I had a serious issue, and it came running down. We were lucky for, um, so I looked up and I saw the mayor out there standing, assessing the situation, because we have Mission Villa Mobile Home Park that butts up against that easement, and we were really fearful that they were gonna flood. The water was really intense. But thank God for Augie, Eventuaries Construction Company on Friday. They dug out, and then they put some dirt, and then they put some asphalt down and packed it to create a basin so that that water would pool there. So we knew that water was gonna pool there. And thank God that they thought out of the box, and they spent four or five hours that Friday doing this to secure that easement from that water running down Markel Lane, which it would've if we hadn't dug down and made, created a second basin. Of course, it was in front of my house, but, you know, they came the next morning, they pumped it out. But my thing is, where's KB Homes? They created this water. Why is Ming's project doing all this? And I'm concerned, too, about the parking on this project, and also that Markel Lane is not a throwaway. It will be stopped at the end of Ming's property. We're not having access through. So I saw that in the plans on Ming's property. I hope that's still the case, because that easement is not big enough to house throwaway traffic, and their rights of entering that project are strictly from Prospect, not Mission Gorge. Thank you.
No further speakers, sir.
Thank you. Did you want to see any kind of, uh,
Sure.
Do you have a little bit of a staff report?
Sure, we just have a brief staff report. Again, this project was actually approved at city council on October 9th, 2019, and all the conditions of approval for the tentative map. This is a ministerial action demonstrating that all the conditions of the tentative map and the development review were complete, and that's what staff's here asking you tonight. This will allow them to subdivide the property, record, and actually subdivide and record the property and move forward with the development as prior approval. A little history, just to kind of orient. Again, this is the project site, demonstrated in black. Mr. Ming property, the Ming property is, is right here. I have another aerial here, I'll show you in a minute. Prospect Avenue, Mission Gorge Road, and Maricall Lane. This is the project site plan, and actually, the limits are here. This is the Ming property, and from our understanding today, we had a phone call with the developer. They're gonna seek occupancy and then, looking for occupancy in the next couple of months. So they're very, very close. They just have some public improvements and site improvements on site to complete. They're hoping to, with a little bit of setback with some of the rain, they were hoping to have occupancy in a month, but it looks like possibly two months. The project in question, that was prior approved by city council, is a total of 15 residential homes surrounded here, and 38 condos. These all have garages, two-car garages, and driveways. Parking has been a concern that's been brought up numerous times. The project was approved with the tentative map with parking on both sides of Maricall Lane. Maricall Lane would then be dedicated as a public street connecting Mission Gorge Road to Prospect Avenue. On-site, within the private streets, they actually exceeded the parking requirement. Just kind of going back, I think they exceeded it by 29 spaces. However, like I mentioned, the tentative map did approve as a condition of the approval that parking would be allowed on both sides, but we understand there's been some concerns with that. But again, this is still just a ministerial project tonight, but we're here for any further questions. The actions we're requesting tonight really are authorization to approve the final map, so they can move forward with their lot splits and, and things associated with recording those documents and authorizing the city manager to execute the associated subdivision improvement agreement. And with that, staff's available for any questions or concerns.
I've got one real quick before Laura takes over. Show me the flooding, where was the flooding?
Um, from my understanding, it happened right in here.
Okay, and why isn't, why is there flooding? We ran into this on the other, down the way there, and it's-
You know, we, we- We had extremely high rain levels. I believe their basin was installed, and it was just simply overwhelmed. The, the, the size of the storm was just too large.
We got more rain in January, in February, whenever, earlier in the year than we did on this one. We got all, so that doesn't wash with me, sorry.
I think it's just the duration and the time of the storm was much more intense over a short period of time. We had more rain in January, but not as intense as this last storm.
Okay, but they're flooding out, period. We shouldn't have to go with flooding at all.
Correct. All I can say is the basins were sized correctly, and the calculations and things were done to size it accordingly. That doesn't mean it's gonna attenuate every single storm and every intensity of rain that we get. Like I said, these were exceptionally large events that we had over a very short duration. You know-
I have no intent of proving that any project until this is fixed.
Okay, let me jump in on that, because I did go out there and inspect it, and, because my, that was my concern, what you're talking about. And I think that this flooding was created by the fact that they're under construction. The depression in the road there, right in front of the Maricall home, is greater than anywhere else on the, in the project. And so that's what caused that flooding in there. I believe once the roads are improved and everything is put in the way it's supposed to be, I don't think you're gonna have a lot of it. The road should, with, because you have curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, it's gonna go where it's supposed to. Anything that runs past those, uh, those gutters would go down to Mission Gorge Road, and would, it's all, the whole problem's gonna be relieved. Does that about sum up how that's supposed to work?
I mean, in general, Mayor, yeah, that's the question. It's just a unique circumstance, they just finished the masquerading. The basin was just installed. You know, could we always do more? I guess we could've done some more looking at it and some erosion control, but the minimum requirements were met prior to the rain event. We usually look at that and inspect it. You know, it just, it was an unfortunate set of circumstances and timing, and as the mayor said, as all the storm drains and every improvements are made, it's gonna be designed for the ultimate condition. It's unfortunate that a tropical storm hit right after the masquerading was done, and the basins were just recently installed. And, you know, no excuses, things happen, and, and that's just the circumstance we're at right now. But ultimately, the design as an engineer, I can confidently say, the, the drainage alleviation would, it's gonna significantly improve what's out there today.
Laura?
Okay, thank you. The reason why I asked to have this pulled, and I, I do understand that this is a procedural item, and that's why it was on consent, but this is, uh, this particular development is something that I've been discussing with citizens and our city manager and some, some staff members for quite some time. You know, shame on me, but back in 2019, I, I didn't know as much as I know now, because I was newly elected. And, and now I know a lot more about these developments and some of these older, really old neighborhoods in, in Santee that don't have the setbacks and the drainage and the infrastructure that we're just used to. And Maricall Lane and the, the Mission Villa Mobile Home Parks are very unique. If you, you can look at the map and just see how close the Mobile Home Park, there's no easement like you would traditionally see. So the citizens have had a lot of, especially the ones that live right, right up against Maricall Lane, have, have expressed a lot of concerns over the last year and a half. I've gone out there, I've looked at those things. And really, the one that, um, and, and I appreciate staff's gone out and met with several members out there. But the one that really concerns me is having parking on both sides, so parking right next to the Mobile Home Parks at the end of the day when this project's done. It's just, in my opinion, too close, and I'd like us to consider some other option and bring this back to council, you know, so we can find some other option for some parking. We are a city that wants to exceed expectations on parking or requirements on parking, but not at the cost of the people that have lived there for decades to have them park right outside their, you know, window. So that's my challenge to staff, is to come up with another idea for parking.
If that's a motion to bring it back, I'll second that motion.
One second, Rob.
All right, to speak to Councilmember Hall's comment about we had more rain in January and February, and I agree with that. There was more rain in the months of January and February. This is one day. Water doesn't absorb into the ground in one day like it does over two months. So over two months, yes, there was more rainfall. This, we didn't have a, it wasn't like a major hurricane that everybody expected, but there was, there was significant drizzle, at the very least, that was constant the entire 24-hour period, and that, and, and you've got a project that is clearly not done yet. These are designed by state law to retain water that comes off the rooftops on property. When you've got, because the drainage isn't working properly yet, because it's not, it's, it's, we don't have the streets yet, we don't have the gutters, we don't have the curbs, we don't have all that, that's why it's going to the path of least resistance and sitting in a low area. That's what causes the flooding, and that's what happened here. So when the project is completed, that will resolve those issues into the future. I think that's what Carl was trying to allude to.
Yeah, you know, it was just a unique set of circumstances.
So, the other part of that is parking. You said, I believe you said, parking will be allowed on both sides of Maricall Lane? You said, I believe you said, parking will be allowed on both sides of Maricall Lane?
That's, that's correct. The tentative map approved parking on both sides of Maricall Lane.
So, I understand Vice Mayor Koval's point, and maybe, maybe on one side of the street, it's prohibited, but on the other side of the street, it's necessary. I appreciate you exceeding the parking requirements. Personally, I think the parking requirements are still always not enough because we are in Santee, we still drive cars, and they're gas-powered, by the way. So, I don't, I don't know that there will be enough parking here. We've already seen it everywhere else. You've got a three-bedroom, two-bath house, you're going to have, at one point, you're going to have mom, dad, a couple of kids, most likely, that are all four-driving vehicles and a two-car garage. It's, there's going to be overflow. There's, there just, there just is. It happens on my street, my cul-de-sac. People park on the street behind us. Yeah, it's a, it's a bummer, but, you know, it is what it is. So, I understand, in most cases, you at least have some setback between your home and where people are parking on curbside on a street behind you. In this case, they don't necessarily have that, and we're all cognizant of that, and maybe we should take a look, a second look at allowing parking only on the opposite side of the street from where the Mobile Home Park is.
Go ahead, Dustin.
Well, actually, I'll ask Carl straight up. Can we even do that at this point? Because this project was approved back in 2019, under those conditions, right?
You know, I think we'd have to kind of look at that, and we could bring something back to you. Because the way it's approved, it would be allowed, and that's how the developer's likely looking at it at this point. Not to say we can't always visit these and look at options if problems are created. Our original recommendation would be, let's, let's get the project built, let's monitor it immediately after it's built, and look at options. That's what my recommendation would be, and if parking does become a problem and noise continues to be a problem, because...
Is this a public street?
It would be a public street upon dedication.
It's a public street, though we not have the authority to decide where parking is or not?
We do, yeah, so it has nothing to do with...
Okay, so it has nothing to do with the developer?
I'm just going back to what I said, was that it was approved in 2019.
Fair enough, but it's, but we have the authority...
As a public street.
As a public street.
And I will say, and I'll say this, you know, like, when this approval happened in 2019, frankly, I needed an education on what a proper setback, and I'm a visual learner, so I had to go out and see what that looked like, what that looks like. And it is, it is not what you would expect. I challenge, if you haven't been out to this area, to see their above-the-ground conduit for electricity.
I'm about to get to that, actually.
And I mean, this is not what we see in modern-day Santee. So I don't want to wait and go, okay, well, I mean, if it's predictable, it's preventable. I live by that rule of law, and so I predict that there's going to be a problem, and it's preventable now, so I think we should do our due diligence now and not monitor it later.
Carl, you mentioned that the project exceeded the parking by 29. So you're referring to onsite?
On-site, on the private streets, not including the street, Maricall Lane.
Right, so that's, so there's parking on the actual streets there, not just in the driveways and the...
Just on, on the residential component, not within the condominium proposal. The streetwits along the residential on this street...
Yes.
Have accommodations for exceeding it with the driveways, the garages, and the condominiums also have driveways and garages for each unit.
Correct, but the whis, the whis of the resident, the 15 over there, you see the road looks wider, so like that. One says parking typical with the C-type house right there, so the side of the...
These won't allow street parking.
Correct, no, but stop your cursor back, there was this parking typical.
Mm-hmm.
Up to the left, right there. So that curb right there, along the side of that house, would allow parking?
There is some, there is some like visitor parking and stuff integrated within...
But I'm talking about on the street?
Not on the street, because the street's not wide enough.
But not to the left, to right, right there? Where's this typical parking or typical...
Those are, those are pointing to individual parking stalls here.
Okay, I see a faint line there now.
Yeah, sorry. There's parking stalls here, 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 and here.
Okay. So there is no street parking at all on there, is it, up here?
Not, not within the condominium, only on the single-family residential section, and then also along Maricall Lane.
Okay. Yeah, so I had a question. I remember a discussion about the poles, the SDG&E poles and all that. So along that whole stretch there, there's poles that are along that stretch, and there's one that was on the corner, I think that was really the one that I remember this previous discussion. Did that get relocated, that one that was on the corner?
The, the project proponent, he came forward with a request at the time for a variance to not do the undergrounding that was previously required, and council denied that. However, due to the unique circumstances that some of these poles serve the actual Mobile Home Park, we came to the compromise of allowing those because we can't, we did not want to have the developer and the utilities do off-site improvements into the Mobile Home Park. So there will be select poles that will remain that serve pedestals within the Mobile Home Park.
Sure.
But the general overhead lines across the entire length will be removed except for those poles.
But there was one on the corner, Prospect and Maricall Lane...
Down here.
That, yeah, that was the one that was really...
It's going to have to move a little bit for access for the pedestrian ramp right there. It'll shift back, but it'll still stay.
Okay, because of the improvements there.
Yes.
So there is an SDG&E easement along there then, where that green line is roughly, or what?
I believe it was a single, they did it a lot different back in the decades ago that this was done. I believe, and hopefully staff will correct me if I'm wrong, pointed it out to me, but I think there were only linear easements for aerial. They didn't have like a 10-foot like we require now for aerial easements. It was just an easement along the line, along the property line.
So the street improvements there, we have new curb, gutter, and sidewalk on both sides?
No, only on the east side, everything on this side. And the reason why is...
So only on the east side?
Only on the east side.
So it's on the project side, so curb, gutter, and sidewalk, right?
On the east side, and no curb, gutter, sidewalk on the other side. So the full right-of-way dedication wouldn't happen, that would be conditioned if, for some reason, development happened of the Mobile Home. We would condition, I believe there's four feet of right-of-way still on their side to dedicate.
So actually, that's where I start having a problem, is we're not going to improve that west side at all. We don't, not putting in a curb or anything for these cars to park.
We're putting a curb.
So where's the car, huh?
We are putting a curb there.
Putting a curb in, but no sidewalks?
No sidewalk.
So where's the passenger supposed to get out of the car on? Into the dirt?
Into the fence.
There, there actually is, we're at 52 feet, 36, so there's six feet of dirt, and there's actually a fence stalled there. I think the condition was to mulch it.
What I'm envisioning, that's what I'm saying. So the passenger gets out of the car into the mud or into the dirt? Potentially.
Potentially.
Okay, we're talking potentials on a lot of things here, so I'm bringing up potentials. I, I am having a little heartache with that. I mean, it's on, on that side of the street, if we're not going to improve the, because that's part of the whole, part of our conditions, is that they're required to do the improvements in front of their property, which is what's conditioned on the other side, right? Ultimately. And they're building this road to the width of 52 feet?
52 feet, 36 feet, curb-to-curb, 52 feet, so we're still missing the full 10-foot on the west side.
On the other side, right, with the, with the sidewalk and the, the other fight, the, basically the setback, you know, in there, right?
Yes. A traditional street would have 10-foot of right-of-way behind curb, that would allow sidewalk.
Yeah, from face of curb back.
Yes.
Real quick, Mr. Mayor. So when, if and when this Mobile Home Project ever gets redeveloped, at that point, then maybe we look at parking on that side of the street because you can provide the set, proper setbacks. Until then, I, I think we make that side of the street, no parking.
Can you talk to the, down there where the condominiums are, there's obviously parking on both sides of the streets in the, in the photo here, right?
Correct.
And what is the conditions on the west side of that?
Exactly the same as will be here on Maricall Lane for the rest of it.
All right, let me jump in here, because something that maybe we have, we're not remembering is that when we generally have been approving projects, that the sidewalks, curbs, gutters, all that stuff are on the project, they usually run along one side of the street. If there's an undeveloped portion on the other side of the street, generally, we don't put sidewalks there. I know that's how they did it, you know, my, you know, project, and that was over 30 years ago, so they've been doing it the same ever since. Now, Sean, I got to ask you this question here, because tonight we're being asked to approve this staff recommendation so that they can sign off on it. But like Councilmember McNally said, we have complete control over that as a city street. We can come back and we can do just like any other street in the city and deem that to be a red curb and, or who knows, whatever we decide at that time, we can do that. So, so that, I think that's what we come back, ask staff to do that. Don't need a motion to bring it back, just direction to staff for that, and is that correct?
Right. I mean, I think one, one option is to adopt staff recommendation but give direction to prohibit parking on that side of the street.
Right, two, two different things, though.
Yeah, but I mean, you can, you can put it in one motion and just give that direction, and then staff's going to have to do what they need to do to make it happen.
All right, because in that way, we can get a little more information, we'll go out, look at it, and make a decision at that time, I think, on...
So I make a motion to accept staff recommendation with prohibiting street parking on the west side of Maricall Lane?
We've already made a motion.
Well, no, your motion was to bring this back.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
There was a second on it?
No, there was no second.
Okay, was there a second?
I, I do, I mean, I think technically there was a motion from Councilmember Koval and seconded by Mr. Hall.
I don't remember that.
That's all right, if there was, it was...
It was, it was, Councilmember Hall said, if that's a motion, I will second it. So you, the motion maker, if you made a motion, you would express that intent or not?
My point was to have discussion, but ultimately, the end goal for this is to make it a red curb and no parking right there on the west side of Maricall Lane.
I don't, I don't see why, I mean, if that's the council's direction, just make it. Unless there's no, there's no law prohibiting you from doing that, and it was something that was added, I think, because there was a concern about parking and the need for extra parking, but you've already demonstrated that the project has more parking than necessary. That's the easiest way to, to address the concern, just, just do it now.
Sounds good.
Then we have a motion.
So then now have a motion.
And a second.
Have a second.
I think it was Dustin that said.
It was Dustin.
Oh, Dustin.
And then Rob.
Yeah, because I don't think you made a motion.
I did not.
No.
Well, and we're good.
I think, I think Ron, Ron assumed your motion, I think, is why.
If I made one, I withdraw it, how about that?
Okay, let's vote on that last one. Thanks, everybody, for the discussion. All right.
Motion carries with four I's.
I think we're done with the...
Councilmember Hall voting no.
Set calendar, right? Wow. I don't think you're going to see that, though. Say, go to non-agenda public comment. Speaker slips.
I have five speakers, sir, for this section and one speaker for the last section of non-agenda.
Okay, let's call them.
Truth?
Ron, it was enough drops of water for an emergency, don't you know? Yet, it's always hot to be back in Santee, and that's right, I said Santee because that's a trolley announcement joke, Ron. Have you guys considered the fact that this city hall is not anywhere near public transit? John and Ron, where is the mobility equity? It's horrible. You know how hard it is to get here? All right, but I did see the new digital LED screen at the Trolley Square, and I almost thought a council meeting was going to stream up there, I was going to have to run away, people are going to recognize me or something. All right, last meeting, Dustin made it clear with his quick-on-the-draw motions that he is in competition for going home early. You're going to get it today. All right, Brian has spoken about the voting, and we talked about that before. I looked at the August 15th District 4 County Supervisor special election, and the commissioner of voters alleges that about 20% of registered voters voted. That would mean that at a maximum, only about 13.5% of the population of the city of Santee cared or trusted enough to vote for a position that affects the entire county's future. Next, I recently stumbled upon the city of Santee's campaign finance disclosure documents. Isn't that fun? Ron spent $2,500 for one campaign. Laura had a $1,000 loan with $190 in phone service. Dustin spent about $760, and John got $2,800 from the Republican Party. It's very interesting, and you see, I'm friends with everyone right up until I read the public records into a mic. But if I didn't speak, these guys would be so bored without me, come on, let's be real. Except for Rob, who I noticed generally has difficulty looking at me while I speak. But that's okay, because now you know what it's like to listen to me while on the radio. But now somewhat seriously, Rob, have you ever been hiking and had to use the bathroom in the woods? Well, with cameras everywhere, it'll be on video next time. Something to think about. Unmonitored, private security cameras are one thing, but to have government actively engage in monitoring society is a totalitarian tiptoe. And to suggest that individuals have no reasonable expectation of privacy while in public is deceptive in the case of ALPRs. Anyone can be filmed while in public, that's very true, but to be filmed 24 hours a day along with tracking of one's car and also tracking of associated vehicles, our friends, which is what flock cameras do that El Cajon's now using, amounts to stalking, which is against the law. It's also a violation of the Fourth and Fourteenth Amendment, specifically their guarantees in the Constitution of the United States of America, which public servants claim to take an oath to. I'm going to ask this, was an ALPR tested outside Rio Seco School? Because I heard it looked like one a couple of months ago, was tried and then promptly removed. I don't know, but consent does...
Thank you.
Next speaker, Linda Markel.
I'm Linda Markel, born and raised, and you don't have to give me any money, because I'm not up here trying to promote for funds of a tip jar. I'm here as a citizen of Santee, and I am concerned with the Gold Coast property of Wind Springs Hotel Chain that was on, back in 2019, was approved by you guys. And of course, 2020, they were supposed to start development, and you know what happened with all that. This was a 122-room with kitchenette, fitness, laundry room, 127 parking spaces, and extensive landscaping. Visitors could stay up to 30 days. And in that same year, you guys did branding, branding Santee, you know, what we're about. In that, we had three top things. Family focus was the first. Second, close-knit, small-town feel. Third, up and coming and growing. Well, I'm hoping that this project doesn't get delayed or have any issues when it starts, because it will be starting, and it's been in our family for over 70 years, and we had this dream of having something on that property that we could be proud of and that the city of Santee could utilize for all of the residents here. We had a all-reunion Santana High. It would have been nice to have that extended stay there for people to stay. We have the sports complex, and they all stay in Mission Valley or El Cajon. They don't stay here. They don't stay in a motel. We want a hotel. There is a difference between what we have and what others have. And it's by our rights to be able to have this project and not have any delays. It's been delayed long enough. Also, the Bates Lane, you know, the Bates Hotel landscaping that was put in 30 years ago needs to be removed. Those hideous pine trees that make it look like a haunted property, they need to be removed and have something more cheerful and something we could be proud of on the landscaping. But I'm hoping that this project, and I will be helping these people get this project pushed through. We will be having a groundbreaking in a few weeks on this project, and everybody, I hope, will be able to attend. This is something that's long overdue in this city, and I'm tired of this city losing these opportunities because of delays. And I'm not saying it's the city of Sante's delaying its special environmental groups. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Stephen Silwinski.
Good evening, Santee, everybody. Mayor Minto, Councilmembers Rob, Dustin, Laura, and Ron. Yes, I am Brother Steve. I finally made it back to California. I've been keeping out... I've been camping out in Arizona for a little while, of course, doing wonderful personhood consulting. I have delivered you a new highlighted page with the other information. I hope you're gonna look at it. It's called the Personhood Strategic Action Plan. Citizens who would like to make copies or take pictures of this before I leave today, I would welcome that, too. But just to highlight the Personhood Strategic Action Plan. City Council of Santee, you should announce that public safety is always one of your top priorities. You should announce that the child peacefully developing in the mother's womb will become part of the public legal safety protection umbrella. This will include a personhood resolution that is delivered, again, before you, and personhood language being voted on and inserted as a preamble in the future city charter. Beloved mayor, beloved city attorney, I would welcome a sit-down discussion for future to make sure that it meets all the requirements of constitutionality. Church and community leaders, it is very important that you preach personhood on Sundays to your church faith-based members. You should be stating that society needs to protect the to-be-born. Emphasize, we are called to love God and to love our neighbors ourselves. The conceived child peacefully developing in the mother's womb is a person, an inhabitant, and our neighbor. So very true, so very true, okay? Citizens and business leaders, you have a responsibility to keep speaking up personhood, because that's the new direction with the Dobbs Law that's just been passed by the U.S. Supreme Court. Personhood should be shining. Okay? So please promote personhood at street block parties, dances, festivals, concerts. I miss your summer concerts, by the way. I hope we get a sacred music concert there, too, and I got a beautiful woman in Northern California who can come sing and participate in that. You know, I sing a little bit myself, okay? I look forward to getting on the agenda. That's why I wanted to stop in briefly. My schedule's very, very busy. However, I believe that we can come to some conducive agreement when we get the personhood topic on the agenda. You already have been delivered the 200 advisory petition signatures that shows that citizens want to move in this new direction. So I'll end with, "The joy of the Spirit of God is love for His creation." God bless you.
Next speaker is Susan Varco. Farla. Next speaker is Aaron Packard.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council, staff. Appreciate you listening, taking the time to listen tonight. I am with Gold Coast Premier Properties. We are building the Wood Springs Suites Hotel here in town. Just wanted to stop and say that we're very, very excited. We're getting extremely close to starting. We're within days of pulling the grading permit, and we're just just taking the time to ensure that we're in compliance with the conditional use permit that we've been given and that we're meeting all those conditions that were set forth. Also, we have been receiving comments and calls from various residents in the area and addressing the concerns that they have and making sure that we are going to be a great neighbor and a great member of this community. And thank you. We've been felt extremely welcome here in Santee and look forward to getting this project underway and getting it built so that we have a little bit more hotel space for for people coming to visit Santee. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you want to hear the last speaker, sir, or did you want to put it up then?
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Brian Rumbaugh.
How are you guys? Good to see you again, Brian Rumbaugh. I know I'm meeting. It is. So as Truth was saying, yeah, I do have a big problem with, you know, really the lack of engagement in our society. And I feel like I'm watching a slow-motion car crash, to be quite frank. And I'm trying to find solutions. And really, what I've what I'd like to kind of spitball here is a little bit of a solution that, you know, really is gonna work for everybody. And, you know, we're gonna have to let let go of a lot of the things that we've grown accustomed to and kind of recognize that our society is really capable of a lot, lot, lot more, okay? We, a lot of people don't act like their brother's keeper, that type of thing, okay? For me, as I just texted somebody, it's it's real simple. God, the Constitution of the United States of America, and my family. Why is the United States of America before my family, the love of my family? Because without that, I really can't say that I'd even have the opportunity to love my family, okay? And I actually feel every person in this room, I consider them family as well, okay? So what needs to happen here, it's it's really quite simple. It's abstract, but it's simple. We need to have a hook. We need to take the money out of politics, okay? These stupid phones that we all carry and hold dear to us doesn't leave within three feet away from us. We, as citizens, or whatever, people get hung up on 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 terms, okay? As people in living in the state of California, for instance, we need to recognize the what a Republican form of government meant. We've got a ton of people that they are stuck on this Republican-Democrat thing, and that's that's all by, it's it's it is it is by design, by the way. A Republican form of government requires an engaged populace. And if the citizenry, without people getting rich off of it, decided to create the platform digitally, as opposed to giving our money to Facebook and YouTube and whatever, where potential good candidates like Mr. Trotter here would then run his campaign. So if you were to be running for Board of Supervisors, you'd do a hell of a lot better job than half of them people. I mean, I've got plenty of experience going and talking to those people. You wouldn't be running around trying to get money. It would also provide for a way for the government to really have an active pulse of the society. We would know immediately that. I also have a problem with people getting out of their vehicle and stepping in mud. Or if you're in San Francisco or downtown San Diego, probably.
Something else.
Syringes, okay? Because because we got a lot to fix here, people. You know, I got a lot on my mind, and three minutes is not enough. I.
No further speakers.
Thanks. All right, that takes us to item number eight, which is a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Jet Advertising LLC to design and build a new custom website for the City of Santee. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're gonna have our marketing manager, Bree Humphrey, come back up and provide additional information above and beyond what was presented at our last city council meeting.
Motion to approve.
Is that a joke?
Not getting off that easy.
Kicks in there. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. We're bringing back this item to further address council's questions and concerns from the August 9th City Council meeting. In addition, we included a draft of the professional services agreement to the agenda item for City Council to review. We're gonna do a little recap here. Our last major redesign of our website was done in 2016 and 2017. Here is a list of main components of the website that need to be updated. The current annual cost for our website hosting and subscription is approximately $14,500 a year. Here is a list of improved design, functionality, and key site features that the project will include. Design and compatibility with will be a major component, as 70% of our current website users are accessing the website via a mobile device. Having an ASP.net website hosted through GovCloud and Sequel will allow us to have better backup, bundle pricing with Microsoft Office 365, if you haven't gotten that yet, and faster load times. In addition, we will own the ASP code, so future website upgrades might be less expensive and could potentially be performed in-house. After interviewing several website and marketing companies, Jet Advertising stood out. Jet Advertising estimates Jet Advertising's estimate includes redesigning a website, a custom content management system, also known as CMS, training, and post-launch support. A CMS is what the backend operator uses to update the website in a more user-friendly format rather than HTML. Jet Advertising will be providing a high level of service with two account service representatives that will be specifically assigned to this project and will be available for support at any time. The Jet Advertising team will consist of 14 to 20 staff members with various areas of expertise who will work on this project. The project estimate was provided in a range. This project could take Jet Advertising between 506 and 609 hours to complete. The vendor will bill monthly for actual hours worked. This is great, because some parts of some phases may take less time, some may take more. This provides some flexibility within the project. We have $100,000 budgeted in the CIP for FY 2023-24 to cover all new website-related costs. This includes the redesign, hosting, and third-party integrations. We will have to continue to pay for and operate the current website simultaneously. However, the expense that expense is not included in this amount. Jet Advertising will focus on the page designs, templates, functionality, and the creation of main pages and key features, while the city will focus on updating pages and page content creation. For reference, city staff will have to review over 800 webpages on our current website, decide which ones we want to keep, which ones we want to update, which ones we want to remove, and which ones we want to redesign. In addition, there are over 17,000 hyperlinks alone that we'll have to review, re-link, and update on the new website. Yes, and check consistently. Correct, wrong. And over 6,500 documents and images that will have to be looked through, re-uploaded, and gone through. We will also be working with each city department and city council member to make sure the future website meets everyone's needs. The good thing about the marketing team having such a large role in the project is we will have a large amount of time using the new CMS system before we go live. The anticipated 10-month timeline will provide a suitable amount of time for Jet Advertising and city staff to build out and design an engaging and functional city website. We added on post-launch support, so these 33 hours can be used for additional support, training, and/or minor redesigns. The vendor estimates the project taking between 506 and 609 hours to build a custom website at $150 per hour. We built in a small contingency amount for the project. The project shall not exceed $92,500. This amount is more than the original amount that was brought to council on August 9th. The increase is due to adding dedicated post-launch support hours, which we may or may not need. Next steps, staff recommendation, adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Jet Advertising LLC for the design and build of a new custom website for the City of Santee. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thanks. Let's go to public speaker first.
Speaker is Truth.
I thought $18,000 for a down payment was pretty hefty. I think the the main thing I actually want to say about this is that, Laura, I appreciated all the great questions you asked last meeting about the contract, especially about whether or not they had enough employees to actually provide services as needed, because I also looked them up, and I saw that they seemed to be a very small operation out of Illinois. Why did you guys choose local? I don't know. That's okay. It's saving money, I'm sure. This item says that two account services representatives will be available for support anytime, but is that only for technical support, or does that include graphic design work? You never know when a last-minute design change might be required. I would have liked to see presented publicly graphic design style possibilities, but I'm a visual person, so maybe that's just me, but I would have liked to see some city-specific designs, because on their website, they don't have anything like that. I looked at their portfolio. It's other stuff, but it's not really city-oriented. And, well, I don't know. I'd like something with a little more style, I guess. I skimmed the contract, and it seems like most of the basics of what should be in there is, including banner alerts and webpage preview. Make sure you don't forget to ensure a mobile version of the site. And the only question I really have is, is there going to be a soft-opening version for the public to test and leave feedback? I don't know if you thought about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council comments?
Well, that actually piggybacks into my comment. So thank you, Bree, for bringing this back. And what I actually wrote in my notes between the build and populate area, so QA on imported pages, we should have a soft launch. And I call it, create a subcommittee of citizens, and they don't have to be tech-savvy, they just have to be able to use the internet and challenge them to break it, you know, because they're gonna be our end users ultimately. It's not going to be internal staff. And sometimes, when you do things like this, staff already knows what to anticipate. Or when you're actually designing something, it's hard to see what the trouble, the opportunities for trouble could be with the with the public. So a small subcommittee, and it should be people that have used different browsers. You know, some people use Safari, some use Google, people that have different mobile phones. So somebody who has T-Mobile versus Verizon, Android versus iPhone, because your mobile experience is gonna be different on those different, you know, platforms. So that that would be my only comment, is that doesn't require any of the contract hours to do that, but it's very beneficial for your team to have some end users try to break it for you before you launch it. So that's my only comment, and then I'll second Dustin's motion.
I was already gonna second. Almost forgot you did that. Other comments or questions?
She answered mine. I wanted to make sure that there were additional hours for implementation, backup, but they've addressed that, so I'm good now.
All right, then. Have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
You talked us into it, Bree.
It's only 8,000 links. All right, that's item number nine, which is a resolution approving and adopting the Santee Firefighters Association 2023-2025 Memorandum of Understanding and a resolution approving amended salary schedules for Santee Firefighter Association represented fire employees, general employees, management, and elected officials to reflect salary schedules, updates for fiscal year 2023-24, and authorizing the appropriation of $966,830 to the fiscal year 2023-24 adopted operating budget.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. The matter before you tonight is the adoption of the Santee Firefighters Association MOU and updated salary schedule increases for, I'm sorry, updated salary schedule updates for salary increases for the SFFA represented employees, general and management employees, and the elected officials. So the presentation tonight, I'll break up into four sections. So I'll talk about the SFFA MOU. I'll talk about the general employees and management next, elected officials, and then the position of assistant planner. So for the SFFA MOU, we just finished a four-year contract. It was from 2019 to 2023. It expired on June 30th of 2023. The city's team and the SFFA negotiating team started negotiating back in February of 2023 for a successor MOU. The council approved the terms of the MOU at closed session on August 9th, 2023. So the SFFA membership is a total of 50 members. There's 27 firefighter paramedics, 12 fire engineers, and 12 fire captains. It's gonna be for a two-year contract, beginning July 1 of 2023 through June 30th of 2025. As for salary in year one, there's gonna be a 4% cost of living adjustment, or COLA, effective July 6 of 2023. On January 1 of 2024, they will be receiving a 6% market adjustment. And for fire engineers only, on January 1. And for fire engineers only, on January 1 of 2024, they'll have also a 1.25% market adjustment. In year two of the contract, on July 1 of 2024, they will be receiving a 4% COLA. Other terms of the MOU, there'll be, there'll be the elimination of the tiller operator pay, elimination of the longevity certification stipend. For their educational incentive, they're going to be reducing the timeframe in which to receive the educational incentive from three years to two and a half years. They're adding something called the recruit pay, where new hires would be placed at a lower, lower salary range and advance to a higher salary range once they complete the six-week fire academy. They will be having increased amounts for preceptor and mentor pay. And their existing wellness program, they're changing a little bit of the structure of that program. So for general and management employees, we're proposing the same COLAs as the SSFA for general employees, so that's non-safety, as well as for management employees, which will include the city manager and the city clerk. Again, it's 4% in year one, effective 7/6 of '23, and 4% in year two, effective July 1 of 2024. For elected officials, on April 26, 2023, the city council met and they reached consensus to reach parity with city employees. Again, 4% year one, and that will be effective August 31st of 2023 and a 4% year two, which will be effective 7/1/24. In addition, their car allowance will be increased, the mayor will be getting 550 per month, which used to be 450, and the council is going from 400 a month to 450 per month. So for the assistant planner position, the planning department desires to have, to underfill an existing associate planner position with an entry-level position, which is an assistant planner. So HR conducted a classification and compensation study and looked in the San Diego market to create the job description for assistant planner and also to establish the salary range. So it is being put in the salary schedule that is in the agenda tonight. I'm going to turn this slide over to Finance Director Heather Jennings to discuss this slide.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council. So with this slide, I'd like to demonstrate how this amendment will affect the budget, will affect the budget and the reserve balance. So we start off here with our 2023-24 budgeted revenues, $56.5 million. We've got our adopted operating budget of $54.8 million, and then the adopted other uses, and those would be your transfers and your additional discretionary payment and so forth. That amount is 1.5 million. The proposed salary updates, $966,830. This gives us a proposed amended operating budget of $57.3 million. And, and then we begin the year, excuse me, we begin the year with estimated reserves of $14.2 million, and with that, we would end the year at about $13.4, or an estimated amount of $13.4 million. The required reserve at the end of fiscal year 2024 would be 11.2%, and that's 20% of operating expenditures. This leaves us with a, with an excess of 2.2 million and leaves us with a reserve percentage of 23.96% reserve.
So the recommendation tonight is to adopt the resolution for the SSFA MOU, as well as approving the amended salary schedule for the SSFA represented employees, general and management employees, elected officials, and approving the appropriation of $966,830 for the adopted operating budget for fiscal year 23-24.
Thank you. Speaker slips.
We have one speaker, Truth.
All right, it was interesting to learn that there's a city job called a confidential secretary to city manager and council. Now allow me to translate the COLA, that's cost of living adjustments, to inflation. It goes down the system as well as a poisonous Coca-Cola, Ron. To sum it up, this item gives an average of a 4% raise to city employees, costing the city over $966,000. A city clerk can make up to over $145,000 a year, an assistant city clerk can make up to over $101,000 a year, while a hard-working secretary will never make more than $71,000. A co-compliance officer can make up to over $89,000 a year, while a city manager gets over $252,000. Even the fire chief only gets up to over $230,000 a year at a maximum. And the director of community services or development services can make almost $200,000 a year. And so I just have a little rant based on those numbers and a recent conversation I had. I, I want to point out how much of a complete inversion there is of how things are supposed to be. Government is supposed to be starved of a big budget and big size. It's not supposed to be a career, or a career where people stay for decades until retirement. One of the few careers where people can actually afford to live here in California, buy a million-dollar house, while so many suffer just to stay afloat. It's all completely backwards. Government is the big business now, while the average American can barely open or operate a business, and mostly because of direct government interference, including by expensive permits, licenses and fees. So many people have had to head or live south of the border to earn decent money, and those who can't take any more of this, they just leave the state and join the record mass exodus. I'm surprised I haven't done it yet. Fun fact, though, because who likes all that seriousness? The mayor of Santee makes the same amount as each La Mesa city council member. I don't remember if that includes the raise for them yet or not. But I've got other things. Here we go. I was talking hairstyles with the different cities' council member, go figure, and I tease them that they could afford to get their hair done however they want with such a huge salary, because they're making more than, they're making the same as you. They're rich over there. In fact, if this mayor, if he complains enough and said a proclaim, he could make an inflated over $208,000 a year, like New Scum Minion, fraudulent emergency declarer Todd Gloria, and guess what? He never even shows up to city council meetings. You know, you might want to consider moving. Yeah, that's pretty good. But thank you for the, all the details and the pretty clear charts and stuff, and the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, questions or comments?
I just want to make it clear to the public, the SFFA MOU, the 6% market adjustment, that is, that's to bring parity. We were calling it a parity adjustment, to bring parity, so, because our fire department wasn't getting, they weren't at the same level as surrounding fire departments, so we went classification by classification to try and make sure that we were paying them at the same level that they're getting in other places around the county, so we're not losing them to other cities around the county as we've had in the past. So that was the reason for that market adjustment and bringing that parity. We oftentimes do that with a lot of our management staff and other staff positions as they come available, so that we are making sure we aren't losing key people to competitive cities around us, and we hadn't done it in some time for our fire department, so that was the reason for that. Everything else, the, the cost of living is across the board for all staff, including management and, and elected officials. I have a little heartache with the clerk getting that, but, but other than that, motion to approve, staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay. With that, a motion and a second, please vote.
Free vote.
Bet you're safe sitting back there, huh?
I can't, I can't think now. Motion carries unanimously.
Oh my goodness. That was pretty, that was pretty funny, Rob. Okay, any other speaker slips? Susan, you said you didn't want to speak at the time. Do you want to come up now?
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. So no, nothing else came in, right?
No, sir.
Okay. City council reports, Ron.
Well, let's make Truth happy. Today I went and visited the smart backyard tour for small homes, and they're massive, 245 square feet, and they're, they're using, it was ADUs now, and one, the other home was 170 feet, so, square feet.
Where's that?
It was in, it was in San Diego, but they're trying to push ADU homes for mobile-type things, too. Looked like a travel trailer, that's what it did, but it was nice.
You better get a bigger one at Home Depot, I believe.
Oh, yeah.
Wow. Laura, can you top that?
Well, all I would like to request is that, since the permitting software is going live this month, that the staff bring back a demonstration as soon as, not all the bugs are worked out, but you know, as soon as possible.
We have plans to bring back a presentation in September.
Awesome. Thanks.
Great. Dustin?
No report, sir.
All right. Councilmember Pocanellus.
I'd just like to thank Vice Mayor Koval and Councilmember Hall for helping on Saturday with the, with Buddy's backpacks, handing out backpacks to needy kids in, in Santee and surrounding communities. There were 1,000 backpacks that got donated. A lot of people I saw, because I was taking the orders and getting them filled, people were actually writing on the, on the slips their appreciation for making this happen. One in particular, it was a single dad, and he was tearing up. He just, he was ecstatic that, you know, he, he couldn't do this without the help, and he was very appreciative, as many, many, many were. It's a, it's a great project that Councilmember Trotter started basically many years ago and has grown in, eight years, yeah, and has grown into something that's even bigger than any of us, and, and I just thank you guys for showing up, thank you for the continued work, and one of the many reasons I'm proud of the city of Santee for all the, everybody does to help our community out.
Thanks. You know, I just, first I want to start off by saying that in our salary standing committee, commission, did a really good job. They had a lot of great discussion about our salaries, and it doesn't always match with what they would ask. And, and there's a lot of reasons for that, and, and they did discuss a lot of those reasons, and, and Dean Glasgow here, he's the chair of that committee, I want to say thanks, Dean, for all the, you know, hard work that your committee did, and hope that you guys think that we did all right. But the other thing I want to talk about is business. And a week and a half ago, we had the first-ever children's business fair in the city of Santee. Probably be called something different in the future, because we found out that not everybody liked being called a child in that fair, because if you're 17 years old, maybe you're not a child any longer. So that may change. However, we had a meeting today and we talked about, we debriefed on that and how it went. And it was extremely interesting to see as, as young as nine years old, developing an idea for what they would like to sell as a product, market it at this fair, and then actually sell it and make money at this fair. It was kind of cool, because I signed a bunch of, you know, temporary business cards, one-day business cards, or four-hour business cards, actually, I mean, business licenses.
I thought you were about to say I signed a bunch of IOUs.
I always think you signed checks.
Well, you know, I, but it was, it was very interesting to see kids at that age, you know, thinking about the future, because those are the guys and gals that are going to really make a difference. They're going to come along and fill the shoes of somebody else who's an entrepreneur that, you know, some people made a living, some people made billions. But we don't, just don't know who they are, but going to that fair, I think, I know there's a couple out there that are going to make some good dollars and business sense, and if they stay in our community, they're going to be great leaders and informal leaders. So that was a lot of fun to participate in that.
So, so which, Mr. Shark Mento, which, which one did you fund?
Well, I have to be honest, there was one that was exciting and different, and it was interesting, because when I, I, it just happened to be one of the ones that I was judging, and it was hard to get up there, because there were so many people around the table wanting to see what they have and, and get what they had, and, and it was so simple. It was like chips of wood, or even shavings of wood, they had like flowers or little different things in them, and the whole concept behind it is that if you want to start your fire and, you know, fire ring or your fireplace at home, you would use these little shards or, or shavings, because they would ignite quicker than, you know, rubbing a couple sticks together, and, and then, you know, the flowers obviously give off a little aroma. And...
I would sell those at Santee Lakes in a heartbeat.
Well...
As a fire chief, sit there like Robin next to her.
But, but I, they were actually one of the top winners. And that was, that was pretty cool to see. Some, some kids there had like, they're making slime. I had never even seen them.
You didn't answer for Councilwoman Pocanellus, is our, so are the Mentos investors now?
No. No, that would be a certain conflict of interest. And, but so that was a lot of...
He's already patenting it.
I think I'm late on that one. Hey, Sean, I need some defense here. Can you help me out? So, but, so that's, that was a really good thing to be involved in. Chamber and the Kiwanis Club, and, and Momentum Tutoring was a big part of that. All businesses here in Santee and, yeah, that's what I said, and service clubs, and everybody that's focused in on doing things for kids, I mean, heck, you can't get any more excited than that to see that kind of thing happening in our community. So, and I'm not going to talk about anything else, because nothing else was as much fun as that. So we'll go on to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of quick announcements, and then I was asked to give a brief report on the city's response to the hurricane tropical storm over this past weekend. So very quickly, I do want to extend a thank you, I know that was referenced earlier, where our summer concert series is finished, and I just want to thank our community services department in total for all of the work that you did. It was an interesting summer from start to finish, and you guys did a great job. I think the community really appreciates your efforts on that. Additionally, for the council's knowledge, as well as for the community, we do have two adopted marine units, and our marketing manager, myself, had a chance to go up on Saturday night and assist our unit at Camp Pendleton, our 2-1 marine battalion unit, for a halfway party that was to celebrate and bring the spouses together, because our unit is on deployment right now, and so they had a party midterm to get everybody together. And I think the city represented very well. They seemed very pleased with what happened, and we're trying to find ways to get them down here to Santee more often, and opportunities for the council to have a chance to say thank you as well personally. We're working on that one. Intergov was mentioned earlier. For the community, I just want to remind everybody, we are going live on Tuesday, August the 29th, with a new online permitting software system for building permits, business licenses, et cetera. So if you can look online on Tuesday, find the web portals, you'll be able to register, you'll be able to log in and get all of your permit processing moving forward. We do have a representative from the company that we're purchasing the product from, who will be here to assist staff in moving forward. If you don't have access to a computer and you're watching this at home somehow, you can still come into the office. We will have a tablet and a computer terminal where you can enter your own project at the counter, and we'll have staff available to assist you in that process. So just a reminder for the community, we're stepping into the 21st century. We're a few years late, but we're getting there, okay? And so that happens on Tuesday here in Santee. Finally, I believe, there we go, I was asked to give a real quick update. I have to say, I was very proud from the council and the staff, working through this weekend and trying to take care of our community. Safety is a first priority for this council and for this staff team, and yes, I think, Ms. Markel, you might recognize that pawn, that's in one of these pictures. On Thursday, we started preparing, we asked for our providers who do provide resources to the homeless individuals in primarily in our riverbeds or lower areas of the city of Santee, we asked them to start going through and doing a sweep to let people know there is rain coming, please move out of the riverbeds. We offered them housing, offered them shelter, offered them resources to try to make sure we didn't have problems with people in the riverbed. The fire department and our key EOC personnel were brought up to speed. We did not activate our EOC, we wanted to wait to see what the impacts were. Public Works had sandbags that were advertised on the 17th through our marketing team to be able to go down to the operations yard and... be able to go down to the operations yard and pick up sandbags. We sent out a lot of messages through social media, et cetera. Friday, the day before everything was supposed to start happening, we did the same thing, got all of the information out, and everybody was on standby to see what was going to hit us over the weekend. On Saturday, the 19th, we ran out of sandbags, over 2,000 sandbags, at the ops yard in the morning. Luckily, we were able to find 6,000 more sandbags, and most of those are gone, if I understand correctly, from Sam and Nick. So the city, the auspices of the council and team, we were able to get out more than 8,000 sandbags to our community to help them prepare for the rain. Again, we modified our messaging all day long to make sure people knew what was going on and had interaction going forward with other communities in East County. The EOC staff were able to speak through messaging, and our fire chief was able to provide continual updates from the Unified Disaster Council from the county of San Diego. So we tried to stay on board with everything. Staff was out looking through the community to see what was needed. On Sunday, as the rain hit town, we did post notices on the website and social media to let people, remind people, don't go in the low-lying areas, stay out of the riverbeds, stay out of the trails, stay away from trees with the wind coming. We don't want it, you know, and everything to fly and hurt people. We did have one large tree come down, it's in the photo there for you, that came down in the city. West Coast Arboris, our tree contractor, was able to get that removed, my understanding is, yesterday. And so it's gone. We also had some smaller trees in some of the parks that came down, other areas of the city, but those were minor. Our staff was on board and taking care of that. We did not have any other major issues. There were some other smaller things, but I'm very proud of the response between law enforcement, fire, our staff team, and keeping council notified and hearing from council about concerns that you also saw. I think we did a really positive job in trying to take care of the community, and I just want to thank everybody that's here tonight, as well as those watching. And if there are any other issues that the community sees that came forward from this weekend, please contact us and let us know, because we want to continually make improvements. And if there's a problem in the future, we want to handle it now and get prepared for that. So if you see anything out there that we didn't talk about tonight, please let us know. Happy to tell you, Santee made it through very, very safely, and we didn't have any major problems for our community. So thank you very much. I hope that met council's desires.
Thank you. Sean? Okay. Before I go on, I do want to, I got a couple things I forgot to mention. Last month, I attended a, kind of like a public hearing with Congressman Daryl Issa regarding the 13 service members that were killed in line of duty during the withdrawal from Afghanistan. And we got to meet some Gold Star members, and listening to their testimony was very difficult, because many of them were so, you know, devastated by what happened, the fact that our, you know, government, our United States government, wouldn't tell them what the truth was about what happened to them. So that was very interesting to do, but it was a great thing. Those family members thanked us very much for being there. Mayor Jones from San Marcos was there, John Franklin from Vista was there, myself, I think Joe Garcia also from Vista was there. And there was an assembly member there. I can't remember the name of the lady that was there, though, but I was thankful that they all showed up. Oh, and on a positive note, though, this Saturday, it's going to be the first annual X-Fest in Santee, featuring bicycling and skateboarding and things of that nature. Be at the Pathways Church parking lot on Saturday, and I think it's going from 3:00 to 7:00. Is that on the website, Bree? Do you remember, or?
No.
Okay. So if you're listening and you like bikes, you like skateboards and all that kind of good stuff, go on out there and see what's going on. It was put together by Dennis Martin, Dennis Martinez, a 1977 world champion skateboarder, and Christian Hoizen, I think is it pronounced, will be there also, and some other dignitaries. So it's going to be a good time, a real good time. And so with that,
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Actually, I want to thank our sheriff's department captain. You mentioned last concerts. We had a rather unruly group of juveniles this year for the first time in, well, it's in the history of doing this, that were consistently trying to cause trouble. Your deputies did an exceptional job, week after week after week, of making sure that it was under control. I just wanted to give a personal thank you for that. I was there, I witnessed the deplorable nature by which these kids addressed our law enforcement, and yet they maintained their cool, calm, collected the entire time, and didn't let them get away with doing the things that they wanted to do. They are way more cool, calm, and collected than I could be in that spot. It's amazing to me that kids can, today, will talk to law enforcement and adults the way that they didn't do. But thank you very much. Please, a big commendation to all those that participated. They were wonderful. They were, they were trying to keep me cool, because I couldn't believe what they were, these kids were saying and doing. So thank you one more time for all your help there. We really truly appreciate it, and we appreciate you helping us keep these events safe year after year after year. You guys were awesome.
Rob, that's hard to believe, because you're always cool. With that, meeting adjourned.